Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, Peter.
Hello.
It was weird. I got I got a little vacation with the planning commission. It hadn't been processed. Transition. And then it said like I didn't need to do anything and then I got. You know, I eventually just realized that I had to do it and it worked out fine, but.
No.
Yeah. I was gonna ask at this meeting before I filled out.
Yeah, I've been caught a couple of times.
It's wild things. It can become a it's like a civil penalty, right?
Or what? Well, I own my house. Oh, are you doing some road work there?
Have you approved the road budget at any time in your life and you own a house? There's certainly not reasonable decisions that anybody could make here in town because nothing completely separate that you start having. Might come into smarter organizations.
All right, are we going to call this meeting door? We're going to call the March 29th special city council meeting to order. And this is a continuation of a public hearing on the proposed Mark Parks master plan. And. Peter, first question is for you is. We got down to continue or close the public hearing earlier on our meeting last month. Do we need to go through pro proponents? And opponents and neutral comments again?
If we've if we've accepted any new evidence into the record, then we would we would want to offer that opportunity for public comment.
Okay, so proponents for the park plan. We we got a couple of new correspondence. And I am not sure whether they actually go with the parks plan or they proposed no bicycle ordinance, which is actually for the council meeting. But we got. One on the ridge path from Carol Lucas, one from Penny Saban. Which would be new to you all. And one from Skylar Archibald.
Yeah, and dead Papadopoulos.
Okay, thank you. And dead Papadopoulos. They were all supportive of the parks plan. So I think they were proponents, but they had objections to bicycles on the ridge path. And. Two of them were that, not allowing bikes on. Yeah, not allowing bikes on the ridge path.
These ones were proponents of bicycle. Yes.
Okay, I don't have those right in front of me. So we have two proponents. For bicycles on the ridge path, three. And one opposed bicycles on the ridge paths. But that is all we will be answering in.
So if we're if we're taking documents into the record, then we'd want to allow public testimony as well. For ADA reasons. And also fairness and transparency. Goal one.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? As a opponent of the Parks Master Plan?
Christie is on, so she would know nothing so far.
And anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed Parks Master Plan? And any neutral comments on the Parks Master Plan draft? We can close the public hearing, I think, at this time and move on to commission council discussion. Someone want to make a motion?
I'm going to close the chair.
So, sorry.
It's been proposed that we close the. Public hearing and it's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay. Not my vote, I'm just clearing there. Okay, and. We want to talk about this plan. I think I've spoken with all of you. Regarding the copy that we got, it has in yellow some of. My. Comments got put into the draft. I gave the copy of my notes to staff to fix the typos and they did a little more. So we definitely want to talk about all of those. I think we probably need to go page by page through this. And. Does anybody have any comments on the staff report? No. What's up, Brad?
Oh, yep, I was fishing for my. I had a couple of comments on page two about recommending naming of the Trails End Centennial City Center Park. Is there a preference for what name we name it? Or was that suggestion, do you have a three-part? Name?
This is the staff report or the client's?
Are you are you on the staff report, Brad?
Staff report. I thought you asked about staff report.
Yes, I did. Can you just be a little more specific?
Yeah, page page two, item G. Rec recommends city council formally name the Trails End Centennial City Center Park. So I was just curious if there was a recommendation for one name or was the. Combination name. The the suggestion.
Go ahead, Carol.
No, no name was suggested because both of the review bodies decided it was something that the city council would be better at. Determining the name may be more official that way. And I would say they didn't have any preference because they just decided not to even open that up.
Okay, leave the can of worms for the council, yeah.
That was one of my questions with the report is what's the process of actually naming a park? Is there a is there a formal process we actually go through public comment or we have to just put put forward a motion to name it?
I was thinking maybe a contest. Or a fundraiser.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a formal process.
There's not that I know of, not ours own. So with that in mind, I think it would be appropriate for us to, before we finalize the plan, to incorporate that into the plan that we do decide in.
So that's long term.
I think.
Any kind of contest is going to be at least two months.
Well, there's no formal process. Do we want to decide now or want to read to a public comment or public input? We can do that. I just thought that. Because it's referenced a lot in the plan, if we just leave it like Trails End slash Centennial Park slash waiting for city to finalize, I don't.
I I think that with two readings of the ordinance, by the time when in 30 days between the two readings, we should be able to. Solidify something. Yeah.
I'll throw it out. I like Trails End.
I do, too.
I love Trails End. Just. Well, you have consensus there.
I don't know what you want to do.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think as far as I'm able to determine Trails End is the historic. Name of the park and the Gearheart Homeowners Association during the 100th anniversary. Put a monument there. With a new name on it, Centennial.
Right?
That's a tough one. Yeah, we'll look at it for the process moving forward and figure out a way to do that. That's.
I'll just make a note that three people that trails. Maybe four.
Yeah, I make it four, sure.
All right, I'll just go with it. I I can live with it. That's what consensus is. All right. Did we just name a park? Do you want a motion or is it consensus? Okay.
You know, I'm probably maybe doing this at the time it was on the.
Agenda?
Yes, for review and then we can discuss that. That would be the most transparent way to do it.
All right.
And then we can kind of take care of that one in the future with a simple process.
Any other comments on the staff report?
I had one more, but I think it'll come up during the discussion. It was about the riparian. Setbacks in the estuary. I was just wondering about placing markers. But both along the creeks to aid people with gauging where the. High tide mark is. But. It's mentioned in the staff report, but. It might not be the appropriate time to. Talk about that.
What is it mentioning, Brad?
The. Setbacks for the. Riparian, it's on.
Page eight and nine.
Yeah, yeah, it's also on page three also.
I'm gonna watch the little bit of the city council. Make sure I'm on mute.
Yes, I'm page two as well.
Well, my comment on that was that it was a good section. So.
Oh, yeah, I totally agree with it. I'm just saying. It's difficult for people to assess where the high tide mark is from which the 50 feet is measured. So if there could be some monuments to. Be used as aids in that effort, that would probably be a good thing. That makes sense?
I did have one comment on the page eight at 1.2. The transportation system for walking, biking and rolling, that is indeed a reference to shared pathways. In the transportation plan. And so it does then show in the comp plan that was updated with transportation plan. And it is not a typo. It is rolling like a skateboard or a scooter. Or roller blades.
Specifically.
It was the only place that was in the plan that we could find was in the definitions, because part of.
It could could reference wheelchairs as well.
I have no other comments. Austin, do you? And so we're gonna move on to the. Master plan and. I'm gonna start on page three. I'm just gonna call now. If you have something you want to stop at, would you? Just say, hey, or something?
Hey, Mir. I I before we get on page three, I had a question about the name change from the parks and open space to parks and recreation master plan. I was just curious from draft to this draft or earlier draft to this draft, we the name changed. I was just curious.
Go ahead, Carol.
It is confusing because. The first parks and open space reference is actually the title of the city park zone, parks and open space. The grant and in general parks are often. One thing and recreation is another. And a parks and recreation master plan is more inclusive of just methods of recreation as well as park. City parks. And so one is more general and the other one maybe erroneously just referred to the zone. The city zone for a park. The name is parks and open space.
Almost like it could be in parentheses, but.
Well, you know, and the acronym gets so long and the whole thing is long, but I think technically. It's a parks and recreation master plan. And it so happens that many of our parks are open space.
Okay. If we had another vowel in there, we could probably come up with the. Cute cute acronym. That's fine. I just. Thought it was.
In reality, everybody just says Parks Plan.
Right?
Okay.
Okay, that's page one. How about page two? Page three.
I unfortunately didn't give my title. She did. I apologize for that, but a number of things that were on there were capitalizations with the bull points and number eight. So. That could be added in. The other number five. Is we, I don't remember what iteration we did this, but we changed it from parks commission to arts advisory committee so that gets changed in parentheses.
This was the the forever committee?
It was, yeah.
I was confused several times reading the document between the ad hoc committee that did its work and.
Yeah.
The one that's being proposed to be a forever. Anything else?
Decide right now what that is and then we'll make those corrections. Or do. Do you want to wait until you get to the section on that topic? Because maybe there's some debate about even having one.
Well, if number five stays, it should be changed to advisory committee probably. And we'll we'll get to the other page later.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on page three? Page four. Page five. I have two changes that were in my notes and one is the one that's in yellow. South end of South Ocean. So the yellow was added and that was just part of my notes that was on my other copy. And the last one, the south end of Wellington Avenue to the beach. That used to say that there was a walking trail and that's been deleted in this. In this version. And so can. Like. The one about South Ocean, I think it's fine and maybe we can add it or maybe we just delete everything. It is just a trail head without really a formal trail.
The South Ocean one?
Yeah, I mean, you can get through there.
You can get through there. Yeah, I think that was kind of the goal, just. Noting noting access points, whether or not it's the physical trail or not.
Deleted.
Okay.
Could be deleted.
That could be, yeah.
So we're off in the yellow.
Offing the. Leaving the yellow, okay, and. The deletion on the south end of Wellington Avenue, which now says goes to the beach rather than onto the fire road. Are we okay with that change? That was made between this and the last version.
Well, I don't have a problem with it. It's basically the same thing. It is to the beach, Little Beach, even though we don't have it anymore. Because you just go down Wellington and go left and then spin around. And the portion of the trail currently is the Wellington Beach Trail was mostly, especially at the beginning, is mostly private property.
Right.
That private property extends out into the estuary. So the access is not necessarily there.
Exactly.
Technically, these property owners are allowing that access.
Right.
So I think that's why the clarification was.
Perfect. So we'll leave it just the way it is read right now. Anything else on page five? Page six. Go ahead, Austin.
In the improvements portion of 2A2, the top of page. I've noticed in some of these improvement sections, there's some. Assumptions or past language that maybe not as appropriate just to be in there. For example. The last sentence in that group is his public sentiment seems to be against the further development of the park, which is construction, many primitive underground structures. I think that's just. That's a current sentiment and all of it is necessarily needs to be in. A section that describes what's currently onsite or. You know, on the property itself. You know, I think that either the council or the advisory committee can make those decisions later on if they if they need to be. But there's just, yeah, some of those allow languages.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree, Austin.
Yeah.
So striking that whole last sentence.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Repeat the item number.
This is item 2A2, Western Miller Dunes Meadow Park, the last sentence under improvements.
Public public sentiment seems to be.
Thank you.
Just strike that sentence.
It's also the same 2A4. Last sentence there is in recent past, the homeowners association has referred construction of low wall base, you know, so that's just kind of the same sentiment. Yeah.
It's one idea.
Yeah.
That's the voice. Is everybody okay with striking that?
Yes, right.
Yep.
And in that. 2A4. It's got no lighting, no off-street parking. And if we put a playground there, there's talk of having to have an ADA parking stall. So we can't, really shouldn't have that in there. Just because of that. And there's another, you know, farther along where we have something about.
We could say, we could say limited ADA parking.
Yes, we could. Limited 2A parking.
Another thing that kind of goes along with the theme with between page six and seven. Page six and seven, but in some of those sections, they have a total acreage. I feel like that's kind of a good thing to have in in this description of these. Areas. And so some have, some of them have it, so like Trailhead Park has it and then some of them don't, you know, along with even just the. Pathways themselves, the ridge path and. Pedestrian trails that'd be nice to have like when you're feet or miles or acreage kind of added to that.
Wait, to the ridge path?
Well, for example, the pedestrian bicycle trail from northern Summit to the Fireball, that's a very small one, but. I think whenever we have available information to add, the the data that kind of shows the size and the scope of that park or that pathway.
Can you do that then easily?
We can do that, yeah. We could calculate the size of the parks and measure the ridge path and put that in.
So I'm just making it an add acreage to as much as possible in this section.
And then your miles.
I I have on the ridge path, which is 2A5. The path running, it says between Cottage and Neocoxie extending from F Street on the south to Gearheart Loop Road. I thought it went to the end of Haver. to Gearheart Loop Road. I thought it went to the end of Hager.
No.
Because it used to go all the way to Little Beach until the access stopped.
No, you'd always start going on that there. It's always ended on that.
And then you were talking about the trail before you were on Hager.
Yeah, Hager.
Okay.
Bringing up the ridge path up there. It also says in there for his trail bikes. I know we're having this discussion or I don't know if we want to start this now or or how we kind of want to go about this, but if we're making changes. You know, be consistent throughout the whole document if we're going to make those changes.
Well, you know, trail bikes is something different to me than a tricycle or a kid's bike.
Yeah.
I think of it as something that you ride like up in the hills. Big white tires and
Right.
tear into the dirt, you know what I mean?
Yeah. It's still light.
Yeah, you you need to be consistent. Whatever decision is made, it should be the same. And and the width of the tires shouldn't dictate whether it's a bicycle or not.
Probably makes a difference though.
Uh, could we, could we back up to two A three for a second? Because I was confused. I read the second sentence about three or four times and kept getting stuck. So the third line says side by Marion side by Marion Avenue, comma, and on the east by private property that is now undeveloped, but zoned for medium density residential ru- use owned by city of Gearheart. So it looks like there's kind of a parenthetical statement there about the private property that's medium density residential. Because if it's private property, then it can't be owned by the city of Gearheart. So I I just got confused. So if somebody could unconfuse me, I'd appreciate it.
They've combined a private property with the owned by the city for the water treatment and pickleball basketball courts. And then it should have that on the east side is private property zone medium. It's just been added together.
Okay, but then should it be put owned by the city of Gearheart before discussing the yes, side private property? Would that make more sense?
Much more.
We didn't really need that description.
Yeah, I could probably strike it. It it feels like kind of a parenthetical statement that isn't all that informative.
So i- is the park that's being struck just that is now undeveloped, the zone for medium density?
Or just the, just the fact that it's bound on this, you know, discussion of where it is, basically. I mean, we all know where it is. You all know where it is.
We don't need to know the boundaries.
Well, we could just drop on the second line, on the west side of Marion Avenue, all the way down to use and then drop in owned by the city of Gearheart, one point one acres. And just get that whole section of private property off.
Yeah.
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 That would do it.
Okay. Anything else on page six?
Well, we started talking about the difference between mountain bikes and regular bikes.
Oh, yeah. That's right.
We we can just, we can keep moving through the document and then we can reference the decision we made later on.
Yeah, I'll just say needs to be finalized. But would there be a consensus that we don't want horses on the ridge path?
I I would. Yeah.
Consensus, yes.
Okay, so it's really
Are you on board?
I know, well, I'm not ambivalent about it.
About the horses?
Yeah. Well, let me ask, let me ask a question. Have there in recent ten years been any horses that we know of on the ridge path? I haven't heard of any.
I haven't heard of any.
I know that people put free horses down on the beach, the country of access, you know, what happened each, but.
Well, I don't know. I I'm ambivalent. I'm just saying, I could go either way. I I would, if I work, I'd like to, but I don't.
Then we're going with a vertical clearance of over nine feet if we're on a horse and not seven feet for human traffic.
Well, I'll I'll go with consensus.
I think the reason that horses were prohibited in the beginning was because it was a footpath.
Right.
And not necessarily something you had a lot of room to you know, have.
Yeah, I could agree with that.
And in places that's still true.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The the footpath, the reference also goes back to eighteen ninety. So horses are probably a very common mode of transportation. They wanted to keep it just a footpath away from horse traffic. Um, I don't think bicycles were such a big deal. So maybe that's why it was excluded.
Yeah, although I'm going with the flow.
All right, so we're just going to finalize by a little bit later. May I move on to page seven?
So so we're saying hor- horses are okay or only short horses less than seven feet?
We're saying no horses.
Or ponies.
Okay.
It's mostly for the cleanup. Bad field to walk around itself. Probably get out and get a ticket.
Still there.
He could stay on the street. He takes his little partner on the street. It's fine. City of two A eight was changed. I have a note there and they did change it to make a clarification on which side of the street it was, because I wasn't, I wasn't sure. They fixed that one.
I had another strike item on the improvement from two A seven, uh, which is the city maintains road approach with gravel and has from time to time considered adequate west边planning problems. Uh, that section was from time to time consistent, be kind of consistent with my comments on cities talked about it, done it. We saw, someone suggested it, so. But the city maintains a road approach with gravel period, which seems sufficient.
I agree, because it'd be just a full zen, but asphalt and ocean environment.
You too. If someone makes that decision, they can make that decision.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. I thought it was the Thompson Creek Forestland, we own a hundred thirty eight acres up there? Is that correct? I'd like to tour that some.
On a horse.
Wow.
No, on a trailer bike. I am moved on to page eight. It's just a typo space on two B two, line two between boundary and between this space there. On two B three, that was changed. I had a recommendation with regard to the path going on the last line merging with F and G to one oh one. However, it was before, didn't sound quite right to me. It was like going down some street that wasn't. So that's already been corrected. Anything else on page eight?
Nope.
Anything on page nine, public privately owned properties open to public use or shared by use?
I have two, two questions about two C four holdings of Gearheart Meadows LLC. Five point five acres of undeveloped land along the western edge. I I know the plan has been underway a lot a long time, but it's no, not really undeveloped anymore. It's par- partially developed. If it, if it's the land that I'm thinking of.
This would be the five point five acres is land that is on the western edge of the Ecoxy Creek, but east of the Ridge Path as it's been designated behind those two neighborhoods.
Basically, the wetlands?
I think so, yeah.
Between Tenth Street, Gearheart Loop.
Yeah, so this is the area between the Ecoxy Creek and the newer portion of the Ridge Path Trail.
Okay, so thi- this is not the Meadows Court subdivision that's being developed?
No. No, it well, it is a part of that development. It cannot be developed because it's within wetlands. So as you're walking along the Ridge Path Trail towards Gearheart Lane on the newer section and you look up to your right, it's in the Ecoxy Creek, the area between the creek and that trail, that natural area that's in the wetlands primarily. The purpose for the, the extension of the Ridge Path Trail was to separate the wetlands from that neighborhood. So all the property to the east of that trail is is wetland and not developable.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Does it belong to any of the homeowners?
No, not individual, but is a single landowner. I believe, but I'm going to double check that.
And and we've still got bikes and horses mentioned uh, in the second to the last sentence of that section.
Well, I know, but that's in part of their that's a part of their
Private property?
CCNR thing or whatever it was.
That law, two C seven, uh, second to last sentence, no indigenous vegetation. I would just change that word to no native vegetation. It's not really common use.
Which number again, sir?
Two C seven, thank you. Second last sentence.
Good catch.
And that property that we were talking about to the east of Ridge Path Trail is uh, by Meadows LLC.
Gearheart Meadows LLC. No structures or filling. No vegetation, including trees will be cut down or removed. Even by the person who owns it. Even by the LLC.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the restrictions are in here. You know, currently exist. And then the only other issue with that is trail maintenance and potentially, you know, rerouting the trail, that sort of thing. There might be some uh, where we're going to be able to do a few things. And which number are you on there?
Oh, that was
Two C four.
That was two C four. And did we strike undeveloped? Or did we leave that? Um, I had written out, but that was when we were, when Brett was talking about it being part of the development. So we're leaving that there.
Yeah, like
Yeah.
I guess I I misidentified the property.
Any other comments on page nine? Page ten? Hurt yellow was my comment. Anything else on page ten? Page eleven?
Um, this is where I start getting to my striking in the notes. I I brought this up multiple times during Travis' process. Notes themselves should be in the full appendix, letting the policies stand by themselves. So I I'm, I'm not sure what everybody thinks about leaving them in the front of the document, but this was part of Jordan's, you know, rationale behind making the, making the case for each of these policies and which I totally understand. It gives you kind of historical context of our decision-making process, but I feel like they should be kind of referenced in the back. Not the policies kind of standing in front of the document. So.
That's a good point.
So as a footnote?
As a footnote, yeah.
Yeah.
And I know that we, we've done it somewhat throughout the each policy, but there's still some of them in here. I feel like they should just be, be put in the footnotes.
Are you talking footnote throughout appendix?
Well, you know, I think we have currently an appendix as historical notes and it's F. So if we want to put them there, I'd be happy with that.
I just want to take a second to look at that appendix set for a second.
I think Austin can write that. I don't think they should belong in the policy.
I don't even think they're historical notes. I mean, unless we want to rename that to be more inclusive of these are, these are footnote. I mean, I often think of the right word. I I agree with you that they could be not with the policies. The policies should stand on their own, but you really want people to be able to easily go back and reference.
Right. Can you put it in the heading of G? Appendix G, notes for policies?
Me, it'd be easier, certainly make the policies less cumbersome.
Well, unless we get a better idea, let's call it appendix G and let's call it policy reference notes or footnotes. And then I mean, obviously, this would be like three, one and three, four or something like that. Yeah.
Three, one, one and three, one, two. I I don't care. That'd be up to whoever's writing the appendix.
You could go with it. We have a consensus.
I can.
Brett? What do you think?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with renaming it. I I just had a question about the sentence that says the city will not take any action, which would result in any meaningful portion of any such park property being converted to any other public or private use. That that is a pretty broad policy doesn't Policy doesn't uh. Allow for mitigation of. Uh changing use um kind of ties, ties the hands of future. City council.
I, that, that is so broadly drafted that I, I agree with Councilor Warren that there could be some concerns about whether we can be able to articulate. Clear standards for people to understand, such as, if you think about the park across from City Hall, there's an art center on it. Um, maybe at some point in the future, a city council would want to add bathrooms or on to that, so it could be. It used more broadly, this kind of language, I guess council could come in and interpret it, but um that does seem like it would. If it's being used for a public use or public good or overall public purpose. Um. You know, that's kind of within the purview of what happens in our parks.
Yeah, it, it like. Uh. Me- meaningful portion, so how, how do you define media or median meaningful portion? Um. Could, could we? Put a shared septic system in a park? Is, is that? Changing the use? Uh, did? In, in my mind, it just opens up some uh cans of worms that we. Don't need to open.
Well, how much of this note do we want or I'm, I'm not following how much of this you're talking about taking out?
Oh, he's, he's just referring to the last sentence in the policy.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, af- after the. Comma, the city will not take any portion, I, I think. That, that's where the problematic, problematic language starts for me.
Doesn't it really start with notwithstanding?
Uh. Not with any words in the learning.
Guess that kind of throws off conditionally.
Yeah, that, that could be, but. Yeah, maybe the last two sentences are the last full sentence. I don't know, I'm uh. I don't think we should take a park and turn it into a private use situation for the benefit of just a few people. And I understand the shared septic idea, but. I, is, are you gonna turn all of downtown into uh using the park for a septic system? Because that's basically what is being asked, has been suggested. And. That's just a limited group of people. We have other. Commercial properties, are they gonna be able to join in?
Well, none of that's been decided or even discussed, truly.
Right, it hasn't, but this takes that away from. Even making a discussion. For some future city council. That's all I'm saying is I'm opposed to that happen. And having this in there allows that not to happen.
The other question is carried. Would a septic system stop us from recreating or using the park as it exists in D.C.? Could you still? Picknick on top of the septic system?
I don't know.
Walk across it, I don't know, like, I think the, the goal of the policy was to. To, to ax out any. Um, reduction of any park space, right? So. And I guess that's kind of what Brett going has. But we need, we need to like make that clear, I guess. Um, cause conditionally, we could put a septic system in there and still use the park. But we also couldn't just. Build a fire station on top of it and still use it as a park.
No, but that would, that would work for me.
So are we saying we're gonna delete the four lines starting with notwithstanding?
I don't know what proper language is to kind of, we should, yeah, but. I would ask.
Carol?
I, I'm trying to. Determine the same question, answer to that question. What? Do you agree with the first sentence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh. I'm not sure, as, as Austin mentioned, that you might want to allow a conditional use. Says either permitted outright or conditionally. Now you probably want to know what that could be.
Yeah, I've got that pulled up when you're ready.
Well, we have to get a conditional use to put playwork on. The park.
Well, same.
So I would imagine it would be just about anything you'd have to get a conditional use.
So conditional use is permitted in the park's notice, so the P zone is number one, park, public park, recreation facility. Alright, so would that include restrooms?
No, the tents, courts.
Non-public recreation facility, public service and public utility use. So that's in there, and that would probably be helpful in order to, let's say we had to put a line under there, water main or something like that.
Sprinklers.
Dwelling for caretaker or watchman or housing staff. Um, is also allowed in the P zone. So public park recreation facility, non-public recreation facility, public service and public utility use and dwelling for caretaker.
This is outright permitted?
That is conditional. There are no outright permitted uses of a park zone. That's why we went to the city uh to, to give permission to put the playwork across the web. Because it was a public park recreation facility.
Which otherwise would allow. Any other included. Use of certain properties.
If you, if you took it out, the last sentence, that you're, you're just back to the zone itself as being the. Deciding document on what you can do in that public park.
That sounds good to me.
Let's do that.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, just the title of it almost says what it's supposed to.
Yeah.
Is everybody agreeable with deleting? I think what we're saying is deleting from notwithstanding, yes.
Yep.
And just to back up a little bit, are we okay then with um. Moving the notes to the appendix, we're gonna call it G.
I have a comment about the notes. It seems like many of them are not even necessary. Like note one, I would delete that entire thing. It doesn't mean anything to me. It's like a judge when he's handing out, down his decision is saying, this is why I'm handing this down. It just seems very interpretive and unnecessary. But that's just me.
I think George was trying to uh speak to how the committee. Came to. What they wrote.
But why should that be a part of the policy?
Which is exactly Austin's point with putting it into the background.
Right.
I'll give you a couple of examples. The comprehensive plan is actually quite short, the background report is quite long.
Right, right.
The background report is where all these kind of things come into, except where you're headed, yeah.
Yeah, and it's like.
Transformation Systems Plan is the way, the, the plan itself, volume one is this big, volume two with backgrounds.
Right.
It's just if somebody came in and be like, why did they put this policy in there? Then you reflect, you're like, oh, this is what they were thinking at the time and all that, so.
It makes it a lot easier to use this document without all the notes, yeah.
Yeah, I just think like in note one, this would prevent us from putting likely by the restroom at Lucky Miller. Park. It just. Just seems real, I don't know, it just seems so unnecessary to me. So just.
With the appendix.
Yeah, I, I'm not comfortable getting rid of all of them, alright. Why do we get all of them? Some of them just seem so redundant. But I'm getting old and cranky. Where that's coming from.
Well, I can remember that, then on, on note one, where it's got the yellow parking lot, that should not be. Except for ADA. Because.
Construction of ADA parking.
Well, the um policy seven kind of addresses some of the parking issues for the park there. So this is the page fourteen, top of the page, the city will avoid converting any portions of property used for parking vehicles, except in an event that future developments facilities. provisions additional parking licenses apply with ADA, so.
So this is kind of redundant to the other, and maybe we can. Just, well, maybe we're.
No, they would, they would have an appendix, I'd be happy.
I think that's the simplest way, just.
Yeah.
Get him out of there.
Yeah, face.
Yeah. Yeah, I can see that they, they may be of some historic or contextual value at some point, but. Uh, it's really not necessary to be in the policy section.
Both one and two, right?
Yeah, both one and two.
Right. Well, I think we mean this for all of them, Carol.
Yeah, just, just a quick comment, what, some of them are in the, what was called historical notes, because they clearly were historical. The ones that are still in the text were left for you to decide if they were of any assistance in interpreting what the policy means. And that's. Uh, you know, J- George is really trying to. Hammer in here what the intent is in that policy.
Right, and that's why they should be.
I think, I think, I think we're happy to have them in the back as a reference.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else on page eleven?
Nope.
Page twelve? Policy three, anything?
Policy three, last sentence, uh, the policy is not intended to preclude the possibility of the city adopting a four doo management plan in the future. We have to. It would be behoove us not to do anything to the dooms as far as the four doom management, because they have. Used the dooms and the vegetation as a friction coefficient in figuring out what the run-up is for. The tsunamis and different tsunamis, and it does make a big difference, because where the fire station might be located will be wet. Without having this vegetation and this friction that the wave loses all its energy on.
I, the, the possibility of adopting a four doo management plan is, is, is in the plan. As some sort of a possible future thing to do. And being there is, for as I'm concerned, is the only place we need it.
This, this is just a note, Karen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I. That was just to describe that it doesn't preclude any, it's in the comp plan, there's a, a ability to do it, I mean, the four doo is. A very unlikely scenario.
Yes.
But it's still a scenario, obviously.
Right, and I just had to say something, because it's.
Yeah.
We've had, what is that, uh, one? Place down there on Thirteenth that was draining the dunes. And I was just, you can't do it, you know?
Oh, the, uh, the um.
It was a condo association.
The condo association there, uh, eighth and ninth. When we're.
Eighth and ninth, it was, not Thirteenth?
Uh, right off Tenth Street, Windward West Condom Inns, where the uh, where the five hole used to. Uh, and then I think that there's, this is also a, some new pushing that's going on. Near the Thirteenth that's caught, but yes, you know, there, there has been some instances where people try.
Okay. Anyway.
Okay, so we're gonna leave it as is and move, move it to the back.
Right.
Um, three point four. So, C, um. You know, my, I took out ten beaches, because I think trying to get a view of the beach from. Ocean Avenue, I don't, maybe up from upstairs, better, so you can see the beach, but you can't see it. So I don't know why it's there, but you can see the ocean. Have to be a really low tide. Really low tide. And uh, and I said, and the adjoining street. And the streets. The plural of the adjacent street last we've seen.
At the top of that policy, the, where it says the last sentence, public interest included, I didn't know, maybe it might be worth saying, but not limited to. Um, I mean, I think. These were listed items, but that could change in the future, I don't know, that's something I guess that we. Be interpreted differently, but.
Right, like doom, moing, doom. Doom moving. Um, the only other note I had here, and it must have been next to the removal of diseased and dead vegetation. Or control of not just weeds, but I said wood chips, good or bad. Um, I know Chad, you're leaving some wood chips down there.
That we left some at one point, and we no longer leave any wood chips, this is just beginning of program. So uh, we haven't really investigated the pros and the cons of doing that. Um, so really, I've been, I've been different, if we say no now, then we may eliminate ourselves to some sort of noxious weed control. That may not take so much work, such as mowing and things like that. Um, so until we really study whether or not the chips are good or bad, I, I would say. Probably um not place it here at the moment.
Right.
And then we can get some more information about best practices, which we need to improve upon anyway. Uh, out there to include that conversation, because that could be the wrong scenario for that. So for now, we are not putting any wood chips out there, because it says that we shall not spread um uh the wood or, or leave any of the wood. uh, the wood, or, or leave any of the wood, you know, like, so it's already in the policy of vegetation that you do not do chips.
Okay, all right.
Well, then this policy is only directed at, like, the reason behind the vegetation of the dune, or management of vegetation, so. Um, wood chips, so like what you do with the material is kind of, you know, a side thing to the the reasons to our very competing interests of doing this. So even just your addition, the prohibition of overnight camping, I felt like that was kind of redundant, that it's already, you know, not legal currently, doesn't have anything to do with the vegetation of the dunes themselves. As far as the interest of that.
Yeah, no. Should we delete that, though?
Yeah, I think it's one of those. Let me go to Carol and Angela and Chris, and Christie, they're also a lot of their existing ones as well.
Yeah.
Um. At, at, at the end of policy four, on the last line, talks about, um. It says, request private property owners refrain from replacing dune grass with lawn or non-native cultivated flowers and shrubs. I was wondering if it could also say, and preserve native vegetation? Like the wild roses?
So we're adding that?
And preserve native vegetation? Or and to preserve it? Anything on policy five? Brent, anything on policy five? Page twelve?
Yeah. Uh, no, I do not.
And third, uh, policy six, I'm gonna say.
Policy six, uh. Does this lock us into keeping the current configuration as is? Or like, for example, if we decided to move pickleball to its own facility, separate from tennis? Would that be prohibited if we adopted this language?
That's my interpretation. That it would be prohibited to make changes, if you wanted to remove the pickleball courses and put a tennis court in, that would be prohibited. Or if you wanted to change the configuration to include more pickleball, it would be prohibited.
Yeah, again, I don't know that, uh, we want to hamstring ourselves or a future city council down the road.
Well, I can suggest you just take out that comma, will continue to be maintained for such uses as currently arranged when this plan was adopted. I don't like when this plan was adopted, because nobody will remember when it was adopted.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe you could just say something like, we will maintain tennis and pickleball. Like.
Tennis and pickleball facilities in the city of Gerhart, and will be reevaluated periodically.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we want to commit to, is that we recognize both sports are valuable.
Yeah. But, but to commit to keeping them at the current location in the same ratios, uh, just seems fraught with danger.
Yeah, basketball, is that a court or?
Yeah, it's a court.
You're keeping that, too?
Is it a court or a half court?
I mean, this is the problem with tying yourselves down to this level. I mean, a lot of parks' master plans I've seen are just merely an inventory of the parks and kind of vision and values for how they will develop going forward versus a very specific grant of authority. And, you know, some hard criteria for what you can or can't do, to the point that Chad was making earlier, on some of this stuff, we really don't know what best practices are, particularly in invasive species, because we just don't have clarity on it yet. So having that level of specificity in a parks' master plan that theoretically, I mean, the current council can't bind a future council, but, I mean, I think would, would create litigation risk, because if there was no longer demand for basketball, and there was increased demand for pickleball, and the community was asking for that, it seems like a council would want to clearly and unambiguously deal, be able to do what the public desired, if that was their desire as well, um, with as much flexibility as possible. And these are, a lot of these sections are just incredibly prescriptive. Um, and maybe that's a good thing, uh, but, you know, it, particularly when your code addresses these as well, at the very least, I hope they would be consistent between the code and this plan.
Yeah, well, and I, I was looking at page three, under one A, purpose and objectives of the whole plan. It says, this plan is not intended to provide specific short-term project plans and is not intended to dictate any detailed operational activities. But, but it seems to go on and dictate activities.
What if we delete, uh, the second half of the sentence, after public restroom facilities? Just delete out of the period there?
Yes.
You could also just reference sport courts, if you wanted to make it more.
Generic, generic.
Because those are the only dedicated courts, right? Public courts?
Today, yes.
Currently.
And I, I, I don't think that is, when it says are currently dedicated for tennis, pickleball, and basketball use, that's not dictating what we will be in the future. And the small parking area for public restroom facilities, period. It's not dictating anything, just identifying, such as what Peter was talking about in regards to how the Parks Master Plan can be referenced.
Well, I, I don't know, it says, will continue to be maintained for such uses as currently arranged when this plan was adopted.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna delete that.
Okay.
Because, because somebody coming along in ten years, when, when there's, you know, some new, new game that people want to have, and, you know, tennis has fallen out of fashion or whatever, it can be interpreted, go, oh, well, this is the place where we're supposed to have our sports courts, just like Carol says. So if there's a new game, maybe it would be accommodated in that space. I mean, we have to trust that they will go, yeah, that's where it's supposed to go.
Yeah, and I think this was originally trusting the compromise between the proponents of more pickleball courts and the front of tennis, maintaining tennis courts as they are. So, but that makes total sense, we can't dictate the future and pickleball, everybody's gonna be burned out on pickleball at some point, right?
We'll all be on the disc golf by then.
So what about coming to the.
Yeah. Yeah, we might need a drone, uh, war court.
Okay, um, so are we done with six?
Yes.
I think so.
And number seven?
You like how it goes trails and park? City central park.
Identified herein as trails and park.
I like that.
So we're gonna leave this, but move the note. And anything else on number seven? And that's where it says complying with ADA. Needs to be there, you know?
Oh.
This is just a comment about trails and park, which we all like trails in, but the homeowners association did plant a garden, and they called it the Centennial Park, but it's called the Centennial Garden. I mean, because it, that's what it was, it was just the garden, it wasn't the whole park.
Oh, yeah, that, that's a great solution.
Boy, you just killed two birds, that's so good.
Way to go.
Really good stuff. Um. Policy number eight. Um. So we got this, and non-motorized bikes only. And that's struck out. We're okay with that?
So I think was brought up before, are wheelchairs allowed on Ridge Path?
Yeah, I asked that question of Peter, and he felt that foot traffic makes allowances for wheelchairs.
Yeah, wheelchairs, wheelchairs are the equivalent to foot traffic.
Okay.
So, and that will be true of a motorized unit as well.
Well, you, you know my stance on on this issue.
On number E?
Yeah.
You're on E now.
Yeah. Uh, or just start the review of all the non-motorized. I mean, that's a, that was testimony recently about it.
Carrie, what are you thinking? On this E?
Where am I?
Policy eight, I'm E.
Bicycle and horses should not be ridden on the ridge path? Well, now, I've ridden my bike on the ridge path. And I've enjoyed it. I'm conflicted, though, because my kids did, but I can see it, how it tears up the, the pathway. Makes it harder for people to walk.
I think it really tears up the pathway when people are, um, not respectful of where they're riding.
Yeah, that could be, it's just, you're not gonna get a teenager to think about respecting the ridge path. They're gonna be looking at, well, look, there's a jump right there, let's go hit that. You know, here's a route, let's jump over that and land on the next patch.
In all honesty, I haven't seen much different in past condition since I grew up here. I mean, we've, we all walked it, it's, it is what it's always been. There's never really been an issue with. You know, I, as far as I know, there's never been, seems to be an issue with the path condition based on bicycle. You're still walking on it, it still gets muddy, it's, it is what it is, it's always been that way. The fact that we're kind of seeing right now bicycles as the culprit of anything that's ingrained in the path, you know, based on the hundred years that it's been there, uh, you know? I haven't, you know, I haven't seen anything that would really make me question the use of it as a degradation of the path itself.
I've only ever heard of one instance where kids were literally doing what you were talking about, and it was described to me, and it was shortly after we started having short-term rentals. It was, I think, probably people who weren't used to being here, but I don't care about it, like, as in occurrence, that it happens all the time.
I also find out that we did a huge public survey for this Parks Master Plan, and I, and you flash back, and when Brian, both me and Brian and George went through that, those surveys, there was maybe one mention of, of an issue with a bike on the ridge path, I had a fact and notes missed. And, but there's, you know, plenty of talks about dogs on beaches, and there's trash receptacles and everything like that, that we actually even, we kind of skirted around even in this master plan, because we felt like it was a really an issue to confront, so.
And you only had one?
As far as I can recall, yeah, and I looked back at these notes, and there was only one to talk about it.
I'd be all right with bikes without motors. I'm older, you know, I'm not doing this riding the bike on the ridge path, it's gotta be on level ground, I'm not a fool.
Right. So are we thinking of deleting this whole line?
I believe, just.
E, I'm talking about E, and delete the non-motorized bike only. From D, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, because I, no, because that wouldn't make sense to, to delete the whole line. You should just say, horses should not be ridden on the ridge path, because I think we all agree that bicycles are.
And then drop the historical footpath on.
Yeah.
That way, people with bikes.
I don't know, I kind of like the word historical context.
Oh, well, then, they're in there. And so, you know, it still doesn't stop a person riding a bike.
I'm okay with not having an ordinance at this point in time saying, don't ride your bike, but I don't want to promote it. Well, we're not.
We're not.
So we're just gonna get rid of the bicycles on E? And, bicycles and, and, and keep the non, the in non-motorized bicycle only?
We're keeping and non-motorized bicycles only? On D?
Yes.
Any other comments on D and E of policy eight?
Yeah, I, I'm, have really struggled with this one, because you know, we've, we've heard from some people who actually live on the ridge path, that it's an issue for them, so I, I am sympathetic to that. I've heard a lot of people that like, like Austin have kids or may have used the trail as a bike. kids or may have used the trail as a bike path in their youth. And so I'm sympathetic to them as well. I have seen some degradation of portions of the trail, especially when bicycles are ridden in rainy weather. So, you know, they ride through the mud and they dig up the path. Which which can be fixed, but then somebody's got to fix it. And that either somebody has to volunteer or somebody from public works has to go out. So that's, that's an issue. My wife and I walk the path probably three or four times a week and in, in our four and a half years, I, I don't recall seeing a bike. So I, I'm kind of a flip flopper politician on this one. I, I don't know.
It's funny. It's probably one of the worst things we're talking about.
Yeah, to me, it's just, it's not an issue. Why making an issue?
Yeah, there, there is something to be said for that, but I, I also acknowledge that it is an issue for some people and those people are very near to the subject because they live right on the ridge path. So that, that's why it's hard.
Yeah.
Right.
I think there's also compromise and alleviating some of those people's concerns that we reflect on Carol's comments. It was, you know, the danger of crossing the ridge path on the street and seeing people almost get hit. I mean, if we're really concerned about that safety aspect of it, which I think we should be, uh, we could put in crosswalks sign or crosswalk lines across those roads. There's some signs that kind of show that you're crossing any that's on a school path. So, uh.
Yeah, that, that could be the compromise.
Yeah.
Austin, you're earning your keep on the council. Anything else on policy eight? People are okay with naturally maintained and to delete a six foot wide. And just leave it no less than three feet.
Mine.
Okay. Policy nine. Looks like number seven and B was added from a comment I made. Uh, ten. Policy ten. Ladderet Garden. Who's that named after? Carol, who's that named after? Ladderet Garden.
It's my family who owns the oldest house in Gearheart and it's my middle name.
Oh.
I didn't name it. My cousin Jeffrey Ladderet donated the corner to the city years and years and years ago.
I'm very grateful of that person.
And now we know.
Well, I don't have a neighbor on that side.
Right across the street. Yeah. And policy eleven. I think I added the word high priority. Moving on to page sixteen, time check at seven thirty. We can get through these policies, I'm pretty sure. Anything else on policy eleven? Policy twelve.
Oh, this one.
Yeah, I said.
I, I have a real problem with this one, not because it's necessary to have some sort of committee. But it seems like what we're asking this, this body to do is a lot. And how do we choose this committee? And who do they report to? I don't know. It's just so ambiguous. I, and maybe you can help here. I'd like to see this go to the, the planning committee. Have them be in charge of it. What do you think?
Yeah. I'm open to that. Um. I also think the planning commission has, they do get along and play. And so oftentimes they can't address things very quickly. In this case, if we, if there's something comes up or you know, there's a big push for some type of new park or new program that they might not be able to address it in, in a fashionable context.
That's true.
So, and you know, I I, I, I flip off on this all the time too. And so I I see the need for it in that we can, we can create a parks program that is really robust and really efficient in this direction, but I also don't want to like ask too much job people and put more, put more pressure on staff to kind of provide that support. Uh, it's not like currently allocated budget wise or time wise. So, um. You know, what my notes here, I suggested maybe we have a advisory committee that meets twice a year and kind of prioritizes just those, those issues or those items every year. Uh, that could be a solution and that can kind of come to the planning commission to kind of help guide that along too.
Excellent.
But I don't know how to kind of rule that or if there's any other ideas that would, would be beneficial.
Chad, is it something public works could do or do they have a lot out there played as well?
If, if I know a little bit of background on this, I think that the frustration or, you know, something like this is to, to move it forward, you know, how are we going to get forward motion on this plan? Well, everyone, we've never had a plan. So there hasn't been able to be any forward motion necessarily in any of our parks. Uh, and that has created some frustration with people. So now that we're working on this plan after some thirty, thirty some years, um, we'll have a plan. The implementation of where to go forward is really driven by the city council. And so if there's a goal for the city council that they want to implement this plan at a certain pace, you can set that goal. Once you've set that goal, then we can budget. Once we budget, then we can accomplish. And I just, without having this plan in place, that hasn't been able to happen. So I think that the intention on this was to make sure something happened in the future. Well, the, I think the plan's gonna be very helpful. What can happen is that future city councils, city councils current just never sets a goal, plan sets behind, nothing happens. So I'm excited for the plan. I think this is gonna be really good for the city. I think it's really gonna be good for the residents of Gearheart because we're finally gonna be able to see some more motion. But we have, we have to make sure that that can be within the amount of growth that we can handle. So that's what we decided by the council. So I think by having the plan would take care of a big chunk of our problem.
You know, and I think your, um, solution of having like just meet twice a year, that would put a huge burden on somebody who thinks they have to go out every week and, you know, look at all the trails and the parks. I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, that was kind of like the, the budget committee sort of thing. They, they look at the budget every year or they do it once or twice a year.
Uh, every year.
Every year. And this kind of prioritize like what maybe what they bring forward to ex commission and also the council as far as actions based on the plan itself. But, um, I don't know how that is kind of structured into this, but.
There might be a, something that has to do with a, a review process on the plan and requirement for a review. And maybe it's just a cursory review to, to read the plan and to talk about, you know, where it is that we're at. And that would really spur the conversation.
What about just having a joint work session? Once a year?
With the planning department?
Yeah, the planning commission. Maybe even with more of the staff.
Yeah. That.
The department heads should be a part of it.
So would that mean you'd be deleting number twelve?
Twelve, thirteen and fourteen.
Right.
Well, policy thirteen, it could say the city will explore potential acquisitions.
True.
I mean, if Chad needs help with that, he has people who are citizens who might volunteer to help. I, I'm just not sure we need to set up a whole structure.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think it might be overkill, but I, I hear Austin's comment about, uh, the planning commission being, having full plate uh, at least part of the year and maybe a subcommittee of planning and added an additional body or two bodies to the planning commission to focus on a park subcommittee. But to, to create a whole new thing, structure seems like it wouldn't really be necessary.
I mean, this reads as if they have spending authority. I mean, the way that it, the way that, I guess I have two concerns. One is that they request a budget is how it reads. If you look at twelve, um, that, that they'll request funds from the city's operating budget when the city is carrying out its duties. And then the other is that if we're actually getting into the park planning land use, it kind of reads as if this group has autonomy and, and practically speaking, it would need to go to the planning commission and then either get appealed to you guys or you guys would take it in order to make a final decision. And just in order to get through any land use process and or litigation, we need to, we would need to do that. Um. We, we, I don't think that we could have a direct appeal from a parks committee to Luba. I, I don't think that would work legally speaking, because we would need to have the hearing in front of the city council, you know, either on the record or de novo. Um, I think we'd need at least, at the very least that. So I guess if you guys want to have, um, an advisory committee that looks at some of these and does a presentation to the council, I, I think there's not a whole lot of legal risk with that. But if we're talking about, um, a separate entity with spending authority and, and final judgment, are, are you guys going to want to give up that much control? And then I think the other question is, can you give up that much control under your charter? And I think that's, that's what we, we'd need to.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I had noticed and I, I can't see it in this draft, so maybe it got deleted, but there was, uh, some language about the uh, parks commission having hiring authority, contracting. And that raises all kinds of you know, the legal.
Again, this is written in the beginning. Is it, this is not a binding. This isn't a binding plan. It's purely aspirational, but in section after section, it sure doesn't read that way. I mean, it really reads as if going back to Lufferat Park and because that was privately donated to the city, perhaps it came with its own limitations. But it is specifically prescribing what you can or can't do in that park, including going so far as to say whether you can put a sign there and how, what that sign could look like. And as someone who's been dealing with a lot of emails related to signs lately, you know, gives me pause. So I guess, I guess I would, just because we could be dealing with this down the road in kind of a litigation fashion, it would be really nice to have some clarity on the fact that this is kind of a vision and values plan, but not binding. And, and if, if we have that understanding right now at the time of adoption, you know, putting that in, but, but for an aspirational plan, this is just incredibly prescriptive.
Yeah. It, it gives me heartburn.
So where, do you think that if we put at the very beginning, this is an advisory parks master plan, so it takes away any legal binding?
Well, I think that this, that this is a, this is part of your comprehensive plan. So cities have a parks master plan and it usually identifies your inventory and then it speaks to vision and values. And those are usually something like that there's a park within a half mile of any neighborhood because you see a lot of cities where there are a bunch of parks in one area. It's usually a wealthier area. Um, and then in, in an area, maybe with more working class homes, they'll call it a park desert. And so those are the sort of things that get, I, in parks master plans that I've worked on get, uh, addressed. In this planet, it was different because it seems like we had a citizen advisory board that understood that most park plans do not get to dictate what happens, but also prefer to dictate what would happen and then would put in notes their rationale for what happened. And, you know, ultimately you guys are the decider. It's your vision and values and I just, I just, um, advise you on legal risk, which is why I pipe up when I see some legal risk. With this sort of plan, with that sort of language, I guess my concern would be similar to my concern about the elk management plan. Like when it talked about elk fencing and then when we looked at what was elk fencing, the stuff in Colorado was twenty feet high. And, you know, I just don't think that that would be in violation of our fence ordinance, among other issues. Um, but, so I guess that's, as we go through sections, there are sections that give me heart, more heartburn than others, and I've tried to flag those. But I think an overarching policy statement that this is our parks master plan, but really just represents the vision and values and are not going to be binding are not going to dictate what a future council can do would probably be helpful. Um, if, as far as a clarity going forward as to how much weight to give this plan as compared to your code.
Peter, is this the first time you've seen this plan?
You know, I've seen it before, but my focus on it before was like dealing with population numbers because where I really, where I've seen call, uh, parks master plans really benefit cities are when we go for statewide grants for parks. So if we have a parks master plan, that definitely helps us get state grants. So that's why I identified some of these, these priorities as good. And I looked through and, you know, I read through them. But then is, as we were, as we were kind of wordsmithing it tonight and, you know, the language has shifted, it was feeling just far more prescriptive to me than when I had looked at it in the past. Um, and I guess I just, I would just like, we have a lot of competing interests, our code, our comp plan, now this, as far as the, how much weight to give each one, that would be nice to know.
Um, may I respond to Peter, I briefly, uh.
Yes, go ahead.
Just re, uh, the policies that are somewhat prescriptive are, are only for city owned parklands.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm asking if something's allowed in your code and then this plan can be read to prohibit that, then is that something you want? Because. then is that something you want? Because it, anytime there's in, any inconsistency between the two documents, it creates litigation risk. Because someone can credibly argue, I'm allowed to do this under the code. And then someone else said, well, there was a later in time parks master plan, and so how much weight do we give to each one? That's the sort of thing that goes to Luba. And so again, if Luttrell Park came with certain conditions from the family and it might well have that there be no structures, vertical structures built on it, and that should absolutely be in this. But if we're saying you, we can't do something in our own city-owned park in this plan, but we could under our code, I think that you as council would want the discretion to have that conversation, decide whether you wanted to do it on its merits versus theoretical. Cause right now, this is all theoretical, but if someone actually brought us the plan, do you want more or less flexibility would be my question.
And are we having to cross-reference this plan in the park zone?
I guess that's why I'm asking for some clarity, Oz, how much weight you want to give this plan versus our coach?
So, so I guess Peter, to expand on what you're saying, it would be prudent to have some language that says in the event of conflict, this particular document shall prevail or control.
Well, I, I mean, I guess my preference would be, we would say that this is aspirational nature, because otherwise, because this has to go to DLCD. So what I wouldn't want to do is every time we want to change the code, we then have to amend this to and send this to DLCD staff. Is what I would like to avoid. So if you guys want to make this binding, then um, I think we're going to want to take, we're going to specifically cross-reference the code and make sure we're consistent. And because, and that is just to prevent litigation, that's not because I think anything in here is wrong or that you wouldn't want to do anything in here. Um, if this is an aspirational document where you're inventorying the current assets and also stating that in the future, you might want to explore more assets, getting more ass, buying more assets, soliciting donations, whatever it is, then if there's a conflict between the code and this plan, then I would be able to say, the code prevails. So what would benefit me most is the person that has to handle the litigation is just certainty as to if this truly is an aspirational plan, an inventory with aspirational goals, these policies, or whether it is the intent to make these binding.
So you're, what we need to do is include in this, these are aspirational policies and goals and?
Right, that, that represent the vision and values of residents of Gearheart and the Gearheart City Council.
Thank you.
So that, this is our roadmap and we're going to use it as such? But somebody can't come in, point to a page and say, no, you can't, you can't do this because you said you wouldn't.
Right, right.
Well, I'm under the impression this was cross-reference with, you know, the comp plan, the transportation plan. All of this should be kind of incorporated, so there is no conflicting um, items inside of it, am I correct? So this should be reflective of our current policies.
Right, and it, it generally is, but when we get into like the super prescriptive things like Luttrell Park, and again, it might, those might be those things because um, because when it was donated to the city, conditions were put on the land, that's something I see frequently. Um, but if there were no conditions on the land, you know, depending on the zoning of that, would you want a bench? Would you want benches there? Would you want some sort of lighting? I mean, I don't know what it would be, but would you want that flexibility if you are allowed that flexibility under your code? I guess would be the question.
Right. Yeah, and I, I'd also like to say, uh, e- even though we have the best intentions of making all the documents consistent and cross-reference, uh, I, I can experience, from my experience in banking, all of those cross-references over time totally fall apart and, and become inconsistent unless people are really on top of it and it, it's just, it'll, it'll be a monumental task to keep them all in sync over a long period of time. And, and we got to think over the long period.
Well, so the parks in the zoning code, there are conditional uses that can be granted in the parks. And that's part of what Peter is troubled with. Because it's saying we will not do even those things that could be under conditional use.
Right, like you're, you're bound to um, you're, you're bound to pickleball, tennis, and basketball in, in this document. And you know, if, if you've been to the Moll Moll Athletic Club, you know that in the seventies, there were tons of squash courts, courts that they built. And then in the eighties, they built all these racquetball courts and you know, different racket sports. You know, badminton was the thing for a while, like the sports go in and out of vogue and if, if you know, pickleball, it's the fastest growing sport in America, that's what they all say. But if it falls out of favor and badminton goes into favor, wouldn't you want the flexibility to convert those courts to badminton if that's what members of the general public want? Like, I think you would, and that would be allowed under your current rules, but under this plan, arguably it wouldn't be. And, and those are just the sort of things that I would flag for you, because unlike your code, which you have a lot of autonomy to just change, all these plans needed to be submitted to the state and signed off. It's just a far more time-intensive process and so we're making assumptions based on a snapshot in time, which is today and the vision and values of people today. And those might change just as the most favored sports change over time too.
Yeah, or the most favored benches.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was a time where you wanted a certain type of bench and then, you know, you see those concrete benches from the sixties and you don't see as many of those anymore.
Well, Peter, is it better that we just rework our introduction to include some of the things you're talking about in terms of being aspirational in nature and such?
Yeah, that this represents really the values of the community at this time, as well as the assets and future ideas for how they'll be utilized. And, and it's not binding um, on a future council. Because it purely is, and to the respect that you're saying, we're going to use this for this purpose, that's kind of, I don't know that you really want to be that bound.
I, I think it is, um, I think it's our values at this time, but I think there is also a little bit of historical context as well. Um, maybe not a hundred percent and maybe not fully, but I think, I think that was part of what the committee was trying to say is, there's a lot about the parks we really like right now. And and try not to change what we have.
Right, and that, that can be true 50 years from now. But you know, do you want the flexibility if pickleball falls out of favor and badminton comes in in order to repaint those existing courts?
Then you amend the plan, like you do the zoning ordinance and the comp plan and every other thing, plan we have.
Yeah, so do we want to re, do we want to amend this parks master plan more than once every 10 years? Do we want to do it every time you guys want to do something that's allowed under your code, but not allowed in this plan? I guess.
I would point out, um, page 30, 782. Um, some of the stickers maybe, but we put forward in front of it. Second goal, point at the bottom of the page. The purpose of the master plan, the planning period is 20 years. The recognition that land use systems often do have consequences last much longer than 20 years. Have consequences effectively permanent, the master plan should avoid any unnecessary duplication of ideas, information, certain city goals, policies, rules, etc. Goes to all the reference, the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance.
I think the group worked hard to not be duplicative in the, in the writing of this.
Yeah. But there's some policies within it that we will have to um, adhere to. And, and I think that's what Peter is, is really talking about, it's kind of from a, a vision to a policy. To, to document that dictates policy, which.
If you look at page 17, this is how it begins. The bottom of the page, policy 16, the city shall maintain benches for public seating in the city-owned park properties at the following locations. A, in the dunes at the ridge, I mean, it literally says you will have a bench in this, you will maintain it.
Right, and it, you can't even see the ocean through those benches anymore.
Right, yeah, but, but the point is, it's very prescriptive. It's prescriptive and, and ties our hands and if, if we don't maintain the benches, then uh, you know, are, are we derelict in our duties? That, that's kind of the.
It says all such benches shall be constructed primarily from natural wood or from synthetic materials, which appear to be natural wood, and without the use of stone, concrete, metal, plastic, or other man-made materials, and such benches shall have a consistent appearance. So you can't, it's saying you can't use metal in benches. And again, that is a, that is a that dick, that absolutely like dictates what you can and can't do based on the aesthetic of today. And you know, if, if you've looked at mid-century modern furniture, we go through different aesthetics over time and do we want, do, would you as a city council want to say, you will only do a bench out of this?
Well, I think the issue with the benches were they were unable to move them anymore because they were concrete heavy benches that nobody can move, so it's trying to avoid that. The benches were a whole other issue, I mean, I think George talked to Chad because I think there's a whole bench
There was a.
backlog that's been talked about for years and so.
We have, which is the bench backlog.
Or isn't there a people of one?
There's a list of 20 people.
Yeah, we have a list of people that want to put benches uh, in memorandum of who member of their family and.
With the, with uh, plaque on?
That sort of thing, yes. And so we've been resistive and just collecting a list and, well, we don't have any policy or direction as to where we benches should go, so we've been waiting for the parks master plan to start talking about that. I think that if the council holds, i- if the council knows that there's a parks master plan and they want the city staff to move forward with starting to do projects, it's up to the council to go ahead and direct the city to do so based on this plan. What's the device to get that done? That's a little separate than, you know, all the dictates that are in here of the specific things we need to do in specific places. That does hamstring a little bit in regards to pickleball and tennis courts and things like that. So if you have your vision and the council sets that vision, then staff better go forward with that vision or then there would be other things uh, that the council would have to do.
So, excuse me for, or so, we're not on policy 16 yet, we're still back on?
Yeah, we got policy 12.
Correct, okay.
It's.
So if we put in this aspirational goal for our parks master plan, Peter, would that go and fly with DLCD? Or does it have to be something written like this where it's prescriptive?
No, I mean, generally of the parks master plans that I've worked on and seen have have included an inventory of city-owned land. Um, and in some respects, set priorities as far as development order. Um, and then they've had overarching policy goals like from a policy perspective, that the city would like a park within X number of miles, a half mile or a mile of exists, of all existing neighborhoods. And that they'll prioritize, and then some cities, they want to prioritize fields, like soccer fields, baseball fields. Others want to prioritize natural parks. Um, you know, more like a, with, in nature with the path through it, I mean, different communities have different vision and values. But I've never seen one that gets into like the type of materials you could use in a bench previously. And that, that doesn't mean it's not the right answer for you guys, it's just that um, you know, like, I, if, what if there's a new technology or, or um, some metal component on a bench that's aesthetically quite pleasing? Would you want the autonomy to do that? And then could someone hold this plan up as written today and say, you can't have that bench? That bench has metal that's visible from the exterior or something like that. So I guess, I'm really, my struggle is we're saying, well, this is really an aspirational plan, but then it says there shall be benches at these locations. The benches shall only be made out of this. And, and that doesn't sound aspirational, that sounds like it's dictating a certain result. With, and then what if someone says, well, I don't want a bench, sorry, I want a bench in this other place? And the first person says, well, we specifically listed where we put all the benches. So those are the type of things that I might be less uh, concerned about in other jurisdictions. But let's be honest, like this is Gearheart and people have very strong. It's so, you know, a little flexibility on the front end might be a good thing for you as counselors.
So if, Peter, what I'm trying to get at is if we put this aspirational caveat at the beginning of this parks master plan, then we could change these three policies to bring in the city instead of the GAC.
Right.
And we can move along and finish this in a reasonable amount of time. I'm, I'm looking at over two hours and we're still on number 12 for 20 minutes.
Well, we, we've made a lot of progress, I mean.
But is, is that what we can do, Peter?
Yeah, I think, I think that the aspirational nature and, and to the extent that this provides directives, those directives are only recommendations. And then because if you was in, as you as council actually end up being the GAC, which is you're going to have final say one way or the other, uh, just because that's how our land use system works, then this would give you guys the flexibility in order to decide what you think is best for the city.
All right, thank you.
So, oh, i- i- is it going to be a combination of the preamble that says it's aspirational and more strategic in nature? Uh, but should we still take the second step of removing all the tactical detail in the plan that could be construed as in conflict with zoning, fut- future?
I, I think you can say that the sections that, that read as prescriptive should be read as um, I mean, you know, shall, shall be.
Recommendations, not mandates.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right. It's recommendations, not mandates.
So this, is it, with doing that, does it give the city no authority to actually implement this plan?
No, because this, the main thing that this plan is doing is creating an inventory of your public parks and lands. So that then when you go for a state parks grant, you can say this city owned piece land is up. It's a, you know, within our parks master plan and. Under our code, we're allowed to do this and our proposed project for the grant is, you know. Walking past whatever, what, whatever you guys decide you want to go out for. Uh, play, playground equipment, you're just putting into one of the parks. That's the sort of thing that this master plan would better allow you to get state grants to get. That's how I've seen other jurisdictions use that.
Well, sections, uh, section four and five are just that. They're like a capital improvement plan that. Referenced all the state standards for, excuse me, neighborhood parks. Uh, community parks and what size they should be. And, you know, with those state guidelines, that's, that's in the document. Uh, the policies are something that. Um. Maybe are unusual in a park plan. I, 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 I've seen short park plans. I've seen really long park plans. Uh, I think you have latitude. And again, if they're just mainly referencing city owned parks, these quote restrictive policies. Um. George and the committee's intent was to. You know, it's gear hard, like you said, to keep it like it is and not, what's, what's Chad going to do with these twenty requests for more benches? Just say, put them wherever you want. Where can they go? He needs guidance on that. And, you know, what kind should they be?
We're also incorporating the public survey that we spent, you know, hours going through and. Try to incorporate the comments and the public input on this to, this is what the public wanted. You know, they've had twenty different opportunities for public comment periods through our, the parks advisory committee, the planning commission and now the city council. To actually say what they want and don't want. So it's reflective of that as well.
Yeah, that's why it's taken two years to get to this date.
Exactly.
I, but I, I, I do struggle a little bit, like just to take the benches for an example. Um. What I felt that like committee wanted was that there would be. A kind of bench. Maybe it would match a kind of table. I don't know. We didn't really talk about picnic tables very much, but. But, um. I, I think what they were striving for was consistency. And even consistency may change over time. Um, just like, you know, when we're talking about the, the, the concrete benches, I mean. They, they were a good thing. They're hard to steal because they're so heavy, you know?
Wind doesn't blow them over.
Wind doesn't blow them over.
They don't rust.
They don't rust. There's lots of good things, I guess, about, um. But they may not be the only thing. Like maybe there's a new design or something that would be. Okay.
But doesn't, but doesn't this allow you to change that? And at some point, it, it comes up, like, oh, wow, this is new material. Can we just like now incorporate that into this plan?
Oh, no, I, I mean, it's sad, you know, no, nothing but wood pretty much.
Well, that just means if you can't use metal, what are you going to nail it together with? Does that mean no, no nails? But back to the, I, we keep talking about benches. We just kind of finished this. We gotta go back and finish policy twelve because I have a lot to say about the benches.
Okay.
Yeah, because it says wood or, or synthetic materials that look like wood, for instance.
So how long are we going to go, guys? It's after eight. I know I.
I'm moving to adjourn.
Well.
I, I would. Because Peter is kind of bringing all this up now, I would love his. Red line. Kind of through this document, if he thinks there's items that really is, you know, put hidden on the city. To, to go forward, like I would love to see that, like he's. You know, he's bringing up a couple of different things, specifics in these policies and, you know, this is the first time. After two years of hearing this, this no longer, legally, this is a, a disruption in this plan, so. I would love to have him kind of go through it.
I think that for timing wise, we, i- if, and I don't know that there's as much heavy lifting to do that. You know, with making some suggestions and taking out a harder policy and turning it into something that's a little bit more valuable that tells the story of what your heart wants. I think that the, 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 the plan is really good. I think the foundation is there. I think there's just a few changes that need to be made to accomplish that. Uh, timing wise, you know, we were hoping to get this into the next city council meeting, but with this. We can always do, we can do if necessary. I was trying to avoid it, but if necessary, we could do another special council meeting. To go ahead and, and take a look at where these changes might be. And then, um. And potentially we'll take that through in ordinance at that special council meeting as well. So we do have options.
It, it really is just a policy. I, I'm not, it's a policy question. I'm not saying that you shouldn't want to. Dictate bench location and bench materials because that could be the right answer. Um, it's just, your code doesn't dictate that. So your, your code has a lot of flexibility, a lot more flexibility in some places than this plan does. And we can build into the preamble, the ability to m- make it known that, you know, this. This is aspirational if you want. I, I just, I want to make sure we're giving you what you want. Um, so that you can get what you want in the future and haven't inadvertently hamstrung yourselves.
I definitely want the aspirational nature to be on that first couple of pages. I mean, I took notes.
Yeah.
To put it in that introduction, purpose and objectives. You know, not meant to dictate all future specific activities. It's aspirational nature. In, with an inventory of our current and exploring future acquisitions. Code prevails over this plan. I mean, I mean, we can talk about that more. Reflects our values at this time and, um, some historical context.
I'm moving, we continue the discussion after corrections or red lines from Peter.
And I can just flag some issues. Uh, there aren't that many. I think that a lot of this stuff is, is really good. Um, it's just there, there were a couple of places where I was like, who do they want to do this?
Before we adjourn, did we want to just, uh, maybe. Nip the ball on the advisory committee?
On twelve?
Yeah.
And was that the one that you specifically wanted to talk about more?
Um, no, I specifically, well, I had issues with it. But I think that we've talked a lot about it. We have kind of know what the, the problems are. I really wanted to talk about the bench policy. Bench policy.
That's odd.
Whole other can of benches.
Well, I would like to hear what you'd like to say about the benches before we.
Before we go.
Readjourn, so.
Well, I agree with.
Oh, that's right, I'm saying.
Okay, all right. Okay, I just had like, Peter, I had a real problem with what the materials were going to be.
And I didn't, and I wasn't aware of the bench backlog. But so let me ask you this, the people who want benches, are they paying for them?
That was, uh, their intention that if they had requested a bench, that they wanted to pay for it, you know, we can make it, uh, in memorial.
Uh huh.
Um, which has been one of the issues that are in there, but I think that. To get the bench policy going, now that we have plans for, or an idea or a direction for individual parks, when those parks are being.
Right.
Considered, then benches can be added and then we can go through a list if the city councils chooses.
Well, I have. I mean, I, I know that the concrete benches are really hard to move. But this is the North Oregon coast and these winds will blow over a wooden bench. They will. Concrete, it'll withstand sixty mile an hour winds and rain and everything. So I don't have a problem with other kinds of benches, but I, I do want to allow concrete. That was my one problem. And as far as not having, there will no, be no new plaques and on new benches. I have a real problem with that. Because that's a really great way to share the community of Gearmark. And I have experience with benches with names and plaques. And, and like when I walk on the prom and I see all those benches with all, I stop and read it. And I go, oh yeah, the Smith family, they love to sit here and listen to the ocean. And all of the people that got, that we bought benches for the library, they all paid. And we never had to buy a bench because they all bought them, put their mom's name on them and a book name. I don't know. That, that's, I just wanted to assert that I don't want to. Narrow the construction material of a bench and I want the, uh, plaques to be allowed. That was my big problem.
But maybe we could standardize it.
Yes, we can, and that would be good. We standardized benches at the library. They were just marvelous slabs, but people sit on them and they. They're nice, but on the, on the problem they have, they're all the same, same material.
Yeah, and they are. In seaside, the benches are bolted down into concrete.
Yeah, I mean, well, yeah, in seaside, yeah, in seaside. But I know, but I'm just saying, I said also benches when I'm walking in the prom.
So Peter's point, you know, if this was aspirational to keep the benches natural primarily of wood and consistent.
Yeah.
That would be the policy that the city council.
Yes.
Would then dictate to the staff.
Yes, so maybe.
So the policy is more simple that way and then yet it's still flexible.
Yes. I mean, if they're going to put benches in the dunes, maybe this should be concrete.
Now, I think their intention was to make it, uh, in this, you know, to, to really dictate it to a bench.
And if there's going to be a bench in a park, it could be a different kind, but consistent with all the others in city benches.
Yeah, there's the last one, all sections shall be a consistent appearance. So we can just take out the. You know, synthetic material inside of.
Sure, that'd be fine.
I think that was the overall goal was just.
Consistency.
Consistency, yeah.
And, and natural.
And natural, yeah.
And actually I talked with Doug Doherty, he was on the committee. And I asked him why he put this thing in about no, no new plaques and he said he, the committee never decided on that, that that was added after. Or was, was he in there?
Oh, I don't know. There was a lot of stuff that, you know, we, we, we went over as best as we could. And I think some of the. Bench stuff kind of came with George conversations with Chad and, and kind of talking about the backlog. Cause that seemed to be like a whole issue and. I think he kind of left it in to see if we wanted to decide on if I, if you just want to make a decision or not, so.
There was a conversation as well, if I recall, something from a moment, some people were exactly the opposite, but they even want the community to become, you know. As well, so finding a balance in there. And so I think that that's why we, particularly that the names were left out for this thing.
I understand. That makes sense. I mean, you can see both sides.
Mm-hmm.
My whole thing was if they're going to pay for it, yes, that we don't want to have to pay for benches.
But this particular policy would dictate.
Yes, I understand.
And the other thing was, we didn't want, if there was twenty back, people of backlogs, like. We didn't want a bench over two feet in gear or, you know.
You're, you're only going to get them as the city deems we need them.
Yeah, and then you're going to place them and we're going to think about it and everything and then you're going to decide. Should I put benches in you made and want to go for a theme of railroad park in the future?
Well, yeah, the second, bold my death is other such locations, the new parks commission may determine to be a part of the trust. But if we change the city council.
Yeah, the city, that the city determines. Okay, so we're going to, we're out of the hearing, but we're to page.
Was it thirteen?
I think we're to page.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, right?
Oh, excuse me, yes.
So we got to sixteen and. I'll be interested to see what Carol can come up with or Peter, or Peter and Carol. For twelve and thirteen, because I think we've established that we don't really want to gear our parks. Citizen Advisory Committee. But maybe, um. Some kind of a prioritization meeting once or twice a year.
You know, some sort of device that dictates that in the plan that that shall be these costs. But not.
And priorities.
Yeah, priorities, I did that way, you know?
Um, and then. When would we like to meet again? To discuss this further?
I don't think, uh, we need a time certain moment, uh, unless you folks have some dates that you want to throw out now, that would be great. And then we can do a little investigation back here.
We still have a meeting next week.
Correct, and we will, we probably will, you know?
So we'll take this off the agenda.
Okay.
For next, next week.
Because we have it on the agenda, just do it for ten minutes, fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, and then continue to a date certain. Which would prevent us from having to re-publicly notice everything. Um, as if we were starting from the beginning.
Will you have a, a new draft for us?
I can have comments, uh, for you. Um, just flagging some of the issues that, that I think would be very limiting. Um, if you want specific language. I guess my concern with that would be, it sounds like you guys amongst yourselves needed to discuss like. Other than consistency for benches. If certain types of benches are more appropriate in, in some zones versus others. So that, that sounds like. That sounds like, uh, something that, that I think you guys would have a better handle on than I would.
No, but if you could give us the ones that are the most prescriptive, I mean, I've already gotten some notes.
Yeah, I, I can, I can certainly do that prior to, actually, I can do that prior to the end of the week.
Great. That'd be wonderful.
And there'll be corrections on, uh, policy nineteen also, just to let you know, Carol.
Okay, but we stopped at twelve.
This isn't over yet.
And then I'll work with staff and we'll figure out, uh, a way to move this forward in the future.
Okay.
As well.
All right. So we have one other, uh, bit of business and that is resolution nine six eight and that was sent to us.
So it is a requirement to submit grant applications for these, uh, programs that we are applying for. Uh, and it designates who is responsible for submitting the grant paperwork on the city's behalf. Um, FEMA, uh, has required this of us. We're currently writing a grant to assist us with power, emergency power supply. Uh, up at our water reservoir for the health of our water resource system or our water system. Uh, it's something that's needed. So this is a thirty-five thousand dollar grant that we're trying to apply for and this is a requirement that says that I can submit the grant. Uh, to them.
Chad?
This way.
Well, good, you can hear me. Um, I believe at the beginning of the meeting, either transitioning from the hearing. Or somewhere it got lost in translation, there was supposed to be a motion made to add the item to the agenda, even though we did advertise to cover all bases.
Is that true, Peter?
Yeah, I mean, you did advertise it, so a, a motion can be made. The public had. Yeah, I mean, you did advertise it, so a a motion can be made. The public had noticed that this was something that um we were looking at. Frankly, this is just an administrative matter, so I'm kind of shocked that FEMA is requiring this, but they are. And good on staff for catching it. Um, because this could be a great grant for us. But yeah, I think we uh put a motion, we make a motion to put it on the agenda, which we're in right now. Um, and then you guys could make a motion authorize.
Thank you.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to put this uh resolution nine six eight designation of agent on the agenda?
I move that we put resolution nine six eight designation of agent on the agenda for the special meeting of March twenty ninth. So.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post? None?
I'm going to approve resolution nine six eight designation of agent.
I second that.
Oh.
Up.
Seconding over here. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post? Motion to adjourn.
I'm moving to adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Aye, good night.
And this is a short special.